Committee meeting. Call it to order, roll call, Josh.
Here.
Maureen.
Here.
And I'm here and we also have Jane and Mike Kinnaman. So. First item on the agenda is approved minutes from, what was it, July?
Yeah, that was the last time we met. Amazing, isn't it?
Wow, yeah. I'm so moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 First item on the agenda is sidewalks and Prescott. Who wants to take that?
I think Mike probably wants to get started with it, right Mike?
Yeah, I will. I'll start that. We have a list here that Jane printed out. I think you guys all received that, didn't you? Of the sidewalks that we are currently. I'm shoveling and plowing off.
Right, yes.
Yep, we got that.
Well, one of our concerns is is the more that we do on the hills coming up from Main Street. The more we do them, we're getting more and more complaints on, well, you did it to there. How come, you know, should I just quit shovel? Mind you guys are gonna do that too? And why aren't you doing mine because you did this? And so it's kind of one of our concerns, you know. How, you know, should we go about putting something out there saying, you know, there, we're not shoveling the sidewalks? Or are we going to continue to do the doom? I mean. That's what we're kind of tossed around. I mean, we spend a lot of time on them now. And if these trails go in. We found out, I forget Jane, who you said you talked to, but we will be doing all the maintenance and plowing on all the sidewalks. Anything that's blacktopped or crushed rock, that could add like miles to our plowing.
Mike, so. The, I didn't, I don't have a color printer, so the sidewalks that are residential didn't come out on my map. Could you tell me on your list? Which ones are mostly residential and which ones are mostly like walking trails in Freedom Park and the cemetery?
All right, well, if you take the. We got. Some of the pilots, actually the old steamboat inn. The first one up there, US Highway 10 down to Lake Street.
Yeah.
Pretty much all residential.
Okay.
You know, that we just do it, we know we've, we've done it because. The county comes by. A lot of the residents have shoveled it, but when Pierce County comes by, they throw it all back on their sidewalks. And then a lot of times it's wet because they use salt.
Oh.
And it'll refreeze and they're not able to get it off their sidewalks. So we have helped them out with that.
Mm hmm.
But then it just continues to get longer and longer. You know, I'd say pretty, you know, pretty quick, the new sidewalks going down towards the beach, they're probably gonna want us to do that.
That's probably true. And. Where, where's another incident like that?
Well, just looking here.
The trail.
Well, we got the, which we, that was kind of an agreement, the trailer court, you know, there's a section there a couple of blocks long.
Mm hmm.
That we never done before, but we have the last couple of years now. And that's quite a substantial lot of, I mean, that's pretty good.
And what are the issues with that one, Mike, though? There's issues.
Well, the problem with it is, is it's such a narrow sidewalk and our equipment's wide. So we're ripping up their yards as we do it. Same way with down by. The Dairy Queen, that section is narrow. And our equipment again is so wide, we're ripping up the yards. So I was just, one of the concerns is that we're gonna continue to have to do these, we're gonna probably have to purchase something a little narrower. You know, like maybe a V plow that'll come in closer to the tires on our skid loader and that's six feet wide, but it would maybe narrow up. And at certain times we can widen, you know?
Yeah.
And then there's a little section that we've been doing from, well, each hill, Orange Street and Cherry Street Hills. From Rod Street to the top. It's been a request now that we do them. I guess I'm not gonna point finger, I'm not for sure who requested it, but. So we've been doing them, but now there's people at the top of the hill saying, well, why did you quit there? Why didn't you continue to come, you know, my direction? And I understand, you know, on the hills, when it rains and then before we get the snow, you got glare ice. And it's kind of a hazard. I mean, they're slipping and they're falling. But there again, they're narrow and we're ripping up. And I know come spring, we're gonna get complaints saying, well, you guys dug it up. You fix it, you know?
Yeah. From use, I've used that sidewalk coming up from downtown and it is really narrow.
Right.
I think on the Orange Street one.
And the problem is there's some of them sidewalks are so old.
Yeah.
They're mismatched, there's heaving. And when we take our certain equipment on it, that's not really designed for it.
Yeah.
Or smashed or we're wrecking, it's pretty hard on it. We're ripping shoes off or ripping cutting edges off. But. I mean, we have to try to get it off, but there's just certain plows that would work better if we're gonna continue to have to do it. I decide, you know, it's something that we could. Look at, especially if they were gonna be doing all these trails for. The Riverway and all that.
Yeah.
So are you inkling that we, maybe we shouldn't do some of them? Or maybe we should actually just get the equipment and do them all?
Well, if we're gonna do them, then we definitely need the equipment. Some different, some different equipment. I'm not against, you know. As long as it would take us, if we have forty eight hours. It's gonna take us all forty eight hours, you know, one to two guys and you're talking, it's quite a bit of sidewalk. And now I think they're talking, was it right Jane, around, you know, what they're proposing like fifteen miles or something like that?
Yeah, pretty close to that.
I don't think all of that's gonna be plowable. I think some of it's gonna be ski trails, but anything that's blacktopped or crushed rock, they're gonna recommend that we plow it.
Yeah.
So can you get a, with a snow blower attachment for the skid or would that work better than a plow?
It would on the new trails they're making, I believe they're supposed to be eight feet. The narrow snow blower we can get for any of our skids stairs is like seventy two inch and that's still.
Too wide.
A foot and a half too wide.
But they. About one for, what about one for the, one of the lawn tractors?
I got ahold of a Green Image last week. And the next decent snowfall we have, they're gonna bring over a three thousand series John Deere tractor with a rear mounted snow blower that you drive ahead. So you run over the snow the first time, basically. And you're pulling the snow in from the sides. And there's quite a few towns that have used it and they just want us to try it. They're just gonna let us try it for a snowfall and see if it's something we'd be interested in. Cause I've looked at Bobcat makes a tool cat, it's called. But so far the people I've talked to, they're really high maintenance. And I mean, we have enough breakdowns that we don't need to buy a, a new piece of equipment that's in the shop all the time.
Right.
I thought we'd just try this John Deere out on our next snowfall.
So are we looking at, like, doing them all in the whole city? Or are we just looking at continuing to do what we're doing?
Well, I don't think we want to get into doing them all.
I don't think so either. I'm just wondering where you're going.
If we get the sidewalk to school, once that all goes in, that would be a pile of sidewalk. Plus what's already out there. I would say if we were gonna do something. If they're willing to give us the forty eight and, and maybe a new V plow, you know, for the skid steer, something we can narrow up to the tires. Uh, maybe, you know, continue like we are doing the hills and that. But I don't know, what do you think, Jane? It's to do all the sidewalks, that's just too much for, I don't have the manpower right now. And I'm losing, I'm losing the guy in the spring. I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna be replacing him, but. It's like right now, Randy will spend two days in that skid loader. And he won't be caught up. I mean, it's just. I'm just afraid if we did any more than what we're doing, it's, we're not, we're gonna have to either hire somebody and get another piece of equipment. Or we just get a plow now and keep with what we got, but try to hold it to that. Don't let them add anymore.
How, how soon are we anticipating getting the sidewalks to schools and the hike, the trails?
Well, the trails, they're working on that already. Um, again, some of that will be grassy trails, but you know, they're talking through the subdivisions. Let's just use the second phase of Great Rivers. You know, we've been talking about a sidewalk. And when I had a meeting with Israel and then it's Holly, who's one of their consultants, they don't want sidewalks. They want the, you know, paved asphalt for their trails because they want to be multipurpose.
Uh huh.
If we're gonna have to do the plowing, it makes sense to do the asphalt trails rather than to do the sidewalks, you know, because they. Heave in all of that after a period of time. Um, I think our big question right now too is. How do we respond to some of our residents? Let's just take an example. We get to the top of Cherry, we stop at Elm Street. And then we go up, you know, a couple more blocks and we do the mobile home park. But in between, there's like a ninety year old lady who can't get out and shovel her sidewalks. You know, how do you respond to her when she comes up and pays her real estate taxes and says, how come you don't shovel my sidewalks, but you shovel, you know, everybody else's? How do we start to respond to this?
So that's what we're running into right now.
Right, that's what we're running into right now because we have expanded so much, you know, in doing this stuff. And. Right along US Highway ten, anybody, if it's not done. Almost, you know. Three hours after the snowfall, I'm getting an email that says, just remind the guys that they haven't done their shoveling yet down here, you know? And then I'll, you know, Mike and Mike's like, heck, we're hardly done plowing. I mean, we haven't even started really doing any of the sidewalk stuff. And you know, if they come up here, City Hall, I mean, we, we don't do that much shoveling, but if it's really blowing, we'll try to. At least keep things open up here on the one side, you know, to keep people in. But they could shovel up here three or four times because of how much snow and wind we get up here. Like continually up here trying to keep us open, keep the police and EMS open. Um, you know, that doesn't include themselves down there and, and all of that. Yeah, and so it's kind of at that tipping point right now. Where, so what do we, what do we do? How do we address these residents? Are we, do we say, this is the list we have right now? We're not gonna be able to take on anything more? Um, I guess that's some of the questions that we have. Luckily.
I think you had a criteria that pulled this together in some way. Like, the reason why we do the hills is because, you know, and that it doesn't matter whether there's a. A home on that hill or not, we, we go clear these sidewalks because they're a main. You know, and the reason why we clear these sidewalks is because they're on the school, uh, the sidewalks to school program. And that would. That would give you some criteria to say why we don't do some people's and we do other.
Yeah.
And, and then I would say that we should drop, we. We should encourage the Boy Scout troops or something to have some kind of. Help line in the summer, in the wintertime for elderly people that we, they can be. I mean, Eagle Scout could take that on as a project or the, the older scouts. Um, or the, or one of the fraternal organizations. You know, as, as they just keep a list of people that can be called in the wintertime to get help with their sidewalks.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Um, and the, and I would say, don't add any more streets at all. And. I don't know if we should continue even to clear the ones that are so narrow. I, I, I would use the road rather than the sidewalk in the wintertime personally.
And that's the only problem, all of them that go up, can you connect Orange Street and Cherry Street, they're the narrow ones?
Yeah.
So that's the problem if they want to walk on the sidewalk, which I would rather see them on a sidewalk in the wintertime because cars come down there. Some of them are paying no attention and they find out, oh, this hill is slippery and pretty quick the car's sideways and it could run into somebody walking up the road.
Yeah.
And keep them on the sidewalk.
Mm hmm.
But their, my opinion is, is they're residential side. So the people at the top of the hill have to clean their sidewalks. The people that live on the hill should have to clean their sidewalk.
Okay.
You know, and I don't think this, this should be the city's responsibility. If it's in front of their property, they should have to clear it. Whether it's a hill or whether it's flat, I mean, they chose to live on the hill. And, you know. You know, they know that's their responsibility. You know, we're gonna, if we keep doing these, even the ones from Highway ten to the steamboat, that's all residential.
Yeah.
And if we keep doing that, Mike's right, we're gonna be doing the whole Lake Street and we're gonna be doing everybody else because you're gonna get so many complaints. If it's in residential, I think you should let the residents clear their sidewalk and then pay real close attention to whether they're actually doing it.
Mm hmm.
Remind them.
One thing I'd like to bring up is if the city or county is throwing snow onto their sidewalk, they could plot, if they plowed, what are we gonna do if, after they plow, if we plow snow onto it?
That's the issue that we're getting.
Especially on Highway ten.
Right.
The other thing you could do is, you know, I know the judge in town, he likes to give only monetary fines, which is fine, except who pays it? The parents. How about he does community service for the kids?
Oh yeah, that's a great idea.
Cause you know what? When your parents pay the fine, you don't learn a damn thing.
Right.
If you have to go shovel snow all winter, you're not gonna be doing whatever you did bad.
All right.
Why do you shovel snow with a laptop in your hand?
Okay, did I let the mayor in?
Sure.
Dave, did you get in?
I don't see him on the list.
Yeah, I know, he was on the list. I thought I got him in that.
Are you talking about Dave Lommy?
Okay. Well, we got Darren. So Darren, we're still in the middle of a. A meeting here, just so you're aware. I'm trying to find the mayor. He went away. Okay.
But I do agree that I think we should. Like what Rob, Bob said there was, you know, it is residential and it's really not our fault that they chose to live on the hill.
Yeah.
And I mean, at certain times, but then you're kind of opening up a camera or something, you'd like to say, well, when you get them heavy, heavy, you know, fifteen, eighteen inches of snow. It doesn't bother you to go out, if you can go out a couple of days later and help them. You know, as long as you're heading that direction with the skid loader, if there's a sidewalk there, I don't mind putting it down. But the problem is we're getting so many people that they don't even live in that area and they're walking and they're doing the complaining. Saying, well, this isn't shovel. Well, maybe rather than come and call City Hall, you should go knock on their door and tell them to shovel it.
Well, and that's, I mean, the mayor and I had just a little bit of a discussion kind of before this meeting and, you know, he's a vet, walks everywhere in town. And he said, there's a lot of streets that aren't shoveled. And so what I told him was, get me a list. We'll send a letter or we'll do the door thing that says, this is your one and only notice. But then it comes down to if they don't shovel, then I have to find somebody to hire within the city to go out and do that shoveling. And then it's billing him for it and all of that kind of stuff, which is fine. But we just don't have the manpower to go out and find out who isn't shoveling everything. So, I mean, I think it's, again, it's gonna be a complaint driven type of situation right now, but.
Do you think there's people that actually do not know what the ordinance reads? You think we should print that out and send them out?
Well, I mean, I can do that. We put it every, you know, it was in the last newsletter. I don't know how many people read the newsletter or anything like that. But, but definitely it's been in the newsletter. Um, again, we can put it on our website again. You know, and kind of say, help your neighbors out, you know, that'd be the other thing. So, you know, encourage people to help because that's kind of what's happened with, I know that older lady, we've got, we've had other people that have. Step forward and then are helping her.
Uh huh.
So. So that's kind of where we've been with that one situation.
Does that particular person, do they live by Bicycle Bob?
Just down, yeah, just down the street. That, it's that Ruth Jones.
Okay, cause I've seen Bob down that direction with his snow blower.
Yep, he usually helps her out. He usually helps her out, so, but. But yeah, I just think it's, it's becoming to be a lot. And I think kind of, that's why Mike wanted to bring it to your attention. So, you know, we'll look at equipment again. Um, one of the other things too that people have asked for is the steps off of the bridge to be shoveled. That's not ours. That's the DOTs.
Yes, the DOT is on the north side or west side, basically. From the old Steamboat Park lot, there's steps coming down.
Oh, yeah.
Actually the DOTs.
Yeah, so. So we aren't gonna do those. And then we have that agreement with the Welcome Heritage not to do those steps off the back because we do do around the bridge, so.
Right. And we wrote, you know, we put the police tape up on them, the handrails of them steps, so they should be going down.
Yeah, which some people didn't like that, but that's what it is. So, okay, well.
I think we should look at. Even though we aren't gonna continue to do more sidewalks, the ones we are doing, you know, get Mike the right. You know, if a V plow works or if this little tractor thing that they're gonna, you know, check out, you know. You know, get him the right thing, get him the right tools.
Yep.
So we're not just.
Right, the one nice thing is like on that V plow for the skid loader, when it comes to a V, it lifts up about an inch and a half in the very front. So when you have a mismatch in the sidewalk. Where it heaved on one section, you don't run into that and stop you dead. It, it bounces over that, it kind of glides over it. So it's a lot easier on the equipment. And just one more piece of equipment, but it is necessary if we're gonna continue to do those narrow sidewalks.
Well, I, I think that we can always come back to this too, when the other ones come online, but I, I do think you should have the right equipment.
And for the most part, if we're not doing any more than what, if we're actually gonna cut back, it sounds like, am I right? Like.
Yes.
From the, the property.
What I hear right now, it's like, we should not be doing the residential, correct?
Right. That was.
It's gonna help a lot, although we, we do have quite a few narrow sidewalks ourselves, like. Um, out to Freedom Park. There are spots there that were a little too wide for our equipment with our plows, but that V plow again would be helpful there.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a suggestion is maybe that we get through this winter. And then kind of give everybody a heads up. As next year, we won't be doing these sidewalks and give them a list of sidewalks we won't be doing, rather than just pulling the plug right now. Um, at least give them a heads up themselves to let them know that, you know, we've taken a look at it, we're gonna be taking on a whole lot more. And, you know, unless we can get more manpower apparently. You know, we need to at least give them a heads up that this is gonna happen. I just don't want to pull it out right, you know, under, right now, so.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah, and then Mike get a quote on that V plow.
Yeah, yeah, that's thirty two hundred.
Okay.
Oh, that's not bad at all.
No, not really for what you get. But you know, Jane, if we were gonna do that, like for next year, maybe we should do it a couple of times throughout the summer or give people a little heads up. If they, if they're thinking, holy man, I gotta plow that, I'm gonna go buy myself a, a good used snow blower if nothing else.
Exactly, yep, mm hmm.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It'd give them a little heads up.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be best.
Yeah.
So, but, okay.
Okay, uh, we should probably get wrapped up here. Is there any other business?
Uh, we were gonna have a, Horizon was gonna go on our water tower with another antenna. After that water tower was done, they pulled the contract. Right now, we did a preliminary review, so there are some costs associated with it. Um, Dennis and I are gonna bill them for those costs, even though they're not on it. Um, but that was gonna be, I can't remember how much it was, it was like twenty four hundred dollars a month. So that revenue that we planned on is not gonna be there. Um, they said costs are too high right now. But we have the feeling maybe there's something else underlying within Verizon that could be happening.
Yeah.
Um, they're not gonna pull the plug on it right now, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Hey, any other business? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Jane.
And I'm gonna pause.
Or in the audience here, that would like to speak to the council on anything that's on the agenda, now would be the time to state your name and give your two cents of what your thoughts are. Cause it's not necessarily gonna be open to the public, uh, once the meeting is underway.
Uh, yes, I, I'm Dave Lommy, which you, on your end, you're probably gonna show Patrick, because that's, that's how I logged on when I set this up last week or two weeks ago. Say, I emailed all the council members last night. Um, uh, several documents that I have regarding proposal about, about looking at our, our recreational fire ordinance. Um, I noticed a lot of information there to absorb. Um, I don't really expect you to have an answer tonight, but I would really appreciate if you would take the time, look at it and. And really consider some of the proposals and, and the health effects and. I put out the documents in an individual folder, so when I emailed them over, it looks like they didn't stay in the folders, it's kind of scattered all over the place. So I, I hope you receive them and don't take the opportunity to look at them and so we can have some discussions on them and either a little bit tonight and in the future if need be.
All right. Thank you, David.
Go ahead.
I.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I, I did look at them, David, and I found them very interesting and thanks for sending them.
Thank you.
Any other public comments from anybody that's on the line or on Zoom here that wants to say anything about what's on the agenda? Not, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Either city council, or a twenty fifth, ordered committee meeting of January twenty fifth, planning commission meeting of February first. Cash balances budget year to date, counts payable payroll and review of receivables.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion made, I will second, hence to approve the consent agenda and the six items I had read off. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 O's? Motion carry.
Can I just get who made those, that motion, please?
I did say, I well, motioned and hence seconded.
Thank you, I just.
All right. So, um, next item on the agenda, of course, is the committees. We got the finance committee, it's a review of citizen participation plan for community development block grant. Who would like to present this one?
Cedar Corporation, right?
I think that sounds like a good spot. It's the one that's gonna do most of the work for us.
Unmute us, I apologize. Can you hear us, Mayor?
I, I did that on purpose, but now I can hear you now.
I appreciate it. All right, um, if it's okay with you, Mayor, I was gonna recap again what this is about, because last time I tried to do that, we had some technical difficulties and people could not hear me. So really, really quickly, what we have here is community development block grant money that normally goes to. That normally goes to communities that need a low moderate income level. Except what the feds have done is they earmarked special monies for COVID-related impacts. So that kind of changes all the rules. This is a one-time kind of shot coming from the feds down to the state. This is a one hundred percent grant, there is no matching money. Normally, it's two to one. Normally, it's a two to one, so you have to come up with obviously a match. So what we did as part of the process is the state asked for projects to submit what's called an intent to apply. Which I believe you got two meetings ago, when I spoke on this previously. And what we're looking at is doing some work with the food shelf. As well as creating an area for seniors. Now, there are certain requirements, restrictions, if you will, that the state has put in place here. So, for example, they don't want you just to buy a building, they want it to be something that you're, you're addressing relative to COVID. So when we talked to DOA, and then when we submitted the letter to intend to apply, the project is a couple of fold. First, where the food shelf currently is located, which is the old pool building at the hotel. That building is for sale. So one of the things we've got in here is to buy the building so that the food shelf is in a secure location. They've just done a fair amount of investment with coolers and freezers. The building they're in, they're in about, call it half-ish, the other half is available, and what we would do there is we would turn that into a kitchen. That would serve and prepare hot meals, and we'd be targeting the seniors. Within the school district boundaries, because that's the service area that they are focusing on, both the food shelf and for seniors. Seniors used to be in the intermediate school, they were asked to leave due to COVID, so that's the other hook on this. Is they, the seniors were impacted as well by COVID. So the food shelf has seen an increase. And the amount of people needing help, and we'll talk about that in a minute. The seniors now need a place to be, of course, they can't meet in person now, but they need a place for meals. Putting the kitchen in will allow hot meals to be made and then delivered to seniors. It also will help the food shelf. They get large packages of food from the feds, that they're not allowed to break up. So in other words, they get a bag of thirty-six hamburgers ready to go, they can't break that bag into smaller servings, because they don't have. A quote-unquote approved kitchen. The kitchen will allow them to better distribute the food and get that out to people as well. And then we buy the building. So it's a whole story that all fits together very nicely. So, the intent to apply had some numbers in it, they were high level at the time. To figure out what it would take to get the building, you know, up to speed. What we're looking to do right now, and we're in the process of. Solidifying the numbers is for your next meeting, which is the public hearing requirement of this process. We'll have numbers for you that will be more precise and a better site plan or building layout. So anyway, that's, that's the, in a nutshell, about what the project is. We, I think it's, I think Pete's on?
Yep, Pete's there.
Okay, so Pete was just going to talk for a few minutes, high level, just to tell you about the numbers and how the numbers have increased as a result of COVID and what's going on. Just for a few minutes, and then we're done with that part of it, Mayor, and then Patrick, who's sitting here next to me, is our CDBG grant writer expert. He will talk about the items in front of you tonight, the resolutions, which are all required and kind of the next steps, if that works for you.
Work.
Okay, so maybe Pete, can you just talk a couple of minutes about the, the numbers you've seen and the changes as a result of COVID?
Yes, well, basically, at the end of December, the thirty-first of last year, we had. About a hundred and fifty-plus families that were income-qualified to come through the food pantry itself, which. Consisted of men, women, and child of a little over five hundred mouths that we were feeding. Now, you have to remember that of this, in the old days, it was one time a month. These people could come to the food pantry and access food, and now it's wide open. And it's shoppers' choice, they can get what they wish, any, anything that's on our list. And we've had a considerable spike over the last year. Obviously, if you watched any TV, you can see that everybody has had a, a big spike in. Usage. Thankfully, we don't have the big lines outside like they do in the large metropolitan areas, but that doesn't mean we don't have. People that are. Well-deserving of our, our pantry. And as far as the spike is concerned, I would say that we're probably thirty percent plus over last year. I should say over two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. And being we're just starting in two thousand twenty-one, our numbers start over on the first of the year. So already in January of this year, we. Re-enrolled ninety-two families already, and. We see nothing but. Heading straight up. It's not a fun situation to see these people come in and really needing it. And we've told them all to come back as many times as they need, and. Our senior citizens are income-qualified, they have a. The, the federal poverty rate, a certain percentage over that, and that has increased substantially. Because of the fact that there's so many people that are out of work and needing our, our help. I envision things in the, in, in the future here of. Talking to the health department and hopefully being able to put an area. In, in, in our future plans, our vision for the building. Having the ability to do blood pressure checks for the seniors and possibly shots and that type of thing. But, and that's necessary. We had a clinic in town, but we no longer do, and. A lot of seniors aren't out and about traveling there, you know, this would be a handy. Addition to, you know. Making Prescott a place that. Is offering some things that in the past we've had and we no longer do. I guess our, our deliveries, you know, it many. Many ways we go through delivering to shut-ins, we are looking at possibly some. Additional services down the road, but, you know, all that remains to be seen, but at this point, the city. Can use this, it's, it's a benefit to everyone in the Prescott area school district. I think, I don't know if, if there's anybody has any questions for me, I, I guess I'm. Better off answering a question than just. Rolling here.
Anybody have questions for Pete?
I don't have a question, but Pete, your, your, Pete, your long, hard efforts are appreciated. And I know that it's been a lot of work for you, with limited volunteers at times, and. And so I, I just, I appreciate all you do for our community.
Well, thank you. I just, I just turned twenty years volunteering and working with the food.
It's amazing. That's. Well, and I think right now, it's been a time in need for our community, so I'm glad you're here.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, one other quick thing, one of the things that this project will do is help with some of the overall efficiencies of the building. We're looking at adding a driveway off Pearl Street, so now, right now, trucks have to come in for deliveries or people. Have to come off, you know, as you're coming up the hill or down the hill, cut through the gas station and make a crazy S-curve to get the building. The idea was to make that easier and safer to get in, it also helps efficiencies within the building for the volunteers. For putting those orders together. Right now, when an individual or family needs food, they're calling ahead, it's being picked, and then it's brought out to them. Nobody actually comes into the building, so, again, those are all qualifications, and we need qualifications that way through the grant process, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep, Pete, you're ready, we can have Patrick just talk about what you have in front of you, then we can move on with. Those items.
I had someone say, well, Pete.
Yeah, it's me, Dave. I was gonna ask Pete, where is the food pantry now? Are you still in the same location that you were there? Like, I can't think of the name of the building, but where the old Stella studio used to be?
Right now, we're in the, it used to be the old pool building at the motel between Philander's and the Marathon Gas Station, right, right? Across from the motel.
Okay, okay. That's a nice building.
Yes, it's a very nice building and.
All right. I'll, I'll stop there. Patrick, technically, it's council's the only one that really should be talking, now, Patrick, I wasn't sure who that was, so. You gotta have permission before you speak again, just so you know. I'm gonna go back to Cedar Court now, I think it's Patrick is gonna give us some about the resolutions and so forth.
Yep. So you have a number, number of resolutions in front of you. It's part of the process to apply for the grant. We'll have some additional documents at your next meeting, because some of these have to be passed first before we can have the public hearing. At the same time, when we have our public hearing on the twenty-second, we'll have kind of a conceptual idea of what it will look like. And a cost estimate which will be needed for the grant. We're kind of working through that process now. We, we do have a rough sketch of how the building could be laid out, we'll review that with Pete to make sure it fits his needs. And what he was thinking, and then we'll be able to finalize the cost estimates that are part of the grant. But the, the, the first thing we have to do, and I'm just, I'm sorry, I'll just go back one more. You'll see some things in here, you might say, what does this have to do with our grant application? And I will say, not much. But if we don't have them signed and in the application, they won't accept it. I'll point some of those out, I'm sure they're pretty obvious, but it's just all part of the process and what we need in the application. So the first thing we do need is a public participation plan. And that is set up to list steps on how you're gonna make information available to the public. How are you gonna post meeting notices? Having a public hearing, accommodating people who can't attend meetings. And the draft you have in front of me is basically the language required from the Community Development Block Grant program. This isn't something we made up. They basically say, this is what you need in your plan. So the main thing is. There should be a creation of a Citizen Participation Plan Committee. Who kind of can act as the point of contact through some of this. It can be the council. It could be an appointed group. Typically, when we would meet with them, it would probably be at the same time as council meetings. What they do is recommend that it includes someone from local government. And other people within the community, such as people involved in real estate, banking, labor, communities, et cetera. It also states that if you can have someone on the committee that is low to moderate income, that would be beneficial. Typically, anyone who is of retirement age kind of falls into the. The low to moderate income range kind of automatically qualifies for that. So, that would be up to the, the city on who they want to include, or if they just want to do it all through council, which is fine. And that would be for our public hearing, we would have to have that determined for the twenty-second. So within the plan in front of you, it talks about the reason to have a plan. And that's keeping the entire population of the community informed. It talks about. What the, the committee will do, what it should be, who it should be made of, that you will, how you will notice meetings or public hearings. What is required in the public hearings. The first one on the twenty-second will be an overview of the project, along with the budget. And what we're applying for, and then as if you are awarded the money and move forward with the project. We have to have another public hearing during that process to see if there are any comments from residents who want to know what's going on. Or if they have any concerns about the project as it's being completed, so. Also, how people can have access to any files, meeting minutes, things like that. That happen as part of the process, if there are how to file any potential complaints. About the project or what's going on, and then accommodating non-English speakers. So that's, all those things are addressed in the plan, and again, this is language from the program. And. Excuse me, that's what we're looking to adopt, which is the next step, which is our first resolution. So if there are any questions about the Citizen Participation Plan, we can certainly try to answer those.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Some of them I've made assumptions about, and they, and others, I really don't know what to think about them. The, in the program oversight on number one, the chief elected official, I'm assuming that's the mayor.
Yeah.
Then on the number two. I thought about how are you going to recruit people of low to moderate income, but you said most seniors. Would be in that category, and that also brought me to the last non-speaking English. English-speaking persons, and I wondered about hearing impaired people as well. And whether or not those have to be specifically recruited for the. For the planning committee.
Um, that's a, that, that last one's a very good question, we've never had that one come up, about hearing impaired. No, they, they wouldn't have to be on the committee.
But do you, do we need an interpreter at the meetings? Because we don't do that regularly here.
But it can be requested, and we can find someone then.
Yes, that's true.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we agree that would be the best way to do things is if we have, so within our, our meeting notices, public hearing notices. We, we will let the public know if they have any special needs to contact the city, and we'll make arrangements for those.
Okay, and.
Good question, though.
In citizen participation, I'm assuming that LMI means limited mobility?
Low to moderate income.
Oh, no, see, I was wrong, okay.
Again, another good question.
And then, on the complaints, where it's page three or four. They list a person called executive staff assistant. Is that a person, a real person? And not just, I mean, is it a person that you can actually contact? Rather than just a title?
Right. I don't know specifically, I'm assuming it is a person that will, will handle the complaint and address it. I don't know if we know the exact person. This is for, if there's a complaint, the city gets it, but it also, we need to forward it to the state.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that things go to the state, to an unnamed person, and they just disappear into the rabbit hole.
No, they, they have to address it.
Okay. Okay, that was my questions.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, very good question.
Anybody else? Not, do you want to go to the next step of what we need to do before we list all the resolutions at one time?
Yep, so we get, we have a number of resolutions. The, the first one is, is the resolution to adopt. The Citizen Participation Plan, and basically it outlines. The basic things that are in the plan itself, in which you will follow. Uh, the basic things that are in the plan itself, in which you will, uh, follow and enforce.
Motion to approve the resolution zero one dash twenty one. Resolution.
Sorry, I'll let you get through all the marine.
That's right, I was just naming it.
Alright, so we wanna read the resolution or it's been posted on the city's website, right?
Yep, we'll post it on the city website. We can do that. We'll post all of this.
So we won't read them, uh, cause a couple of them are kind of long. So I got a motion. Who seconded it?
I think it was Bailey.
Yeah.
Yep, it was me.
Alright, so motion made, seconded to approve resolution zero one twenty one, resolution to adopt a citizens' participation plan. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Alright, Patrick, what's the next one?
Alright, next one, next resolution is for the, um, authorizing resolution. Which is to authorize, uh, submission of a community development block grant application. Specifically for the project, food pantry expansion slash senior centered kitchen. Slash COVID nineteen testing location. In the, in the middle of that resolution, you'll, you'll see that it says whereas the city as required has funding available. To match the community development block grant. Uh, as I believe Seth mentioned, there is no match requirement for this special program, so. Project costs, any architectural design. And, uh, grant administration are all eligible to be paid for a hundred percent.
Oh.
Yes.
You found that out today?
We did, we did.
We, we pay it, we pay it upfront, then it comes back to us.
Oh, so it has to be included in the resolution then, but we will get it back.
Well, y- y- yes. What, whatever the costs are incurred during the process, you get a hundred percent back.
Good. Alright, does anyone have any questions about this resolution?
Be clear, the fee for us to write the grant, that is not gonna be recruited.
Did I hear you're donating that? Oh, my ears are a little dirty, okay. So, that's okay though. I mean, pretty much everything else covered, so, um. Any other questions for Cedar Corp on that resolution? If not, I'll enter.
Motion to approve resolution zero two dash twenty one.
Second.
The motion made second approved resolution zero two dash twenty one. Resolution authorized submission of the community development gl- block grant application for the food pantry, senior kitchen and COVID nineteen testing. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Not all in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? Oh, wait, I'm laughing at Josh, sorry. Uh, motion carried. Next item on the agenda, Patrick, is.
The Wisconsin resolution for the Wisconsin residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. For CDBG programs. And this would only pertain, uh, typically if it involves housing and you're gonna acquire housing and displace residents. It talks about, uh, uh, how you have to assist them finding another place to live. If you're going to remove low or moderate income. You have to try to replace it unless there's an adequate stock within the city. But this does not pertain to our project, but you still need to pass that resolution.
Okay. Motion to approve resolution oh three dash twenty one. The Wisconsin residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. I'll second that.
Okay, motion made second approved resolution zero three twenty one. Uh, the Wisconsin residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan for the CDBG program. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. What's the next, was there one more resolution?
Yep.
And I can find a few others if you want to mark.
Oh, no, I know we're painting by the resolution, so let's just keep it short.
This last one is a resolution to adopt the policy to prohibit the use of excessive force. And to enforce applicable state and local laws prohibiting physically barring entrances, exits. For non-violent civil rights demonstration. And basically says that you will enforce existing rules. Barring these things. And basically, if you are applying for community development block grants, you have to have this resolution in place.
Alright, any questions?
I do. Since we have a local police force, Patrick, I just noticed this. And that last line, the city council directs the Pierce County Sheriff. Prescott Police Department.
Yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that too.
Okay, very good, we missed that.
I did too, just right now, so.
I'll change that and get it to you right, I'll get it to you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, um, motion.
Go ahead.
Resolution number oh four dash twenty one. With the changes substituting the pier, uh, Prescott Police Department. In to replace Pierce County Sheriff.
I got a motion, I will second already to approve resolution zero four twenty one. Uh, it's the non-violent civil rights demonstration and so forth and so on. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Before we get off this, Dave, so. How much money is available in this region, Seth?
There is two point nine million and change in west central region, which is, hold on. Hulk, St. Croix, Pierce, Barron, Dunn, Chipotle, Oak Claire, Clark.
And we're asking about almost eight hundred thousand, correct?
We, we're still working on the numbers, but I might be a little less than that, actually.
Okay, but I think the, the one thing that I'm just kind of preparing people for. Is I'm sure this is a very competitive grant. So we really need the food shelf here in Prescott. So if it is that we don't receive this grant, we really need to work towards. Something to purchase that building is, I don't know if it's a fundraising effort of, of some sort or what it would be. But we just, uh, I think it's so important to us to have that. But I just kinda wanna put that out there so people can start thinking, you know, if there is something that happens to come along where we wouldn't get the grant. Fingers are crossed, toes are crossed, everything. But I just wanna kind of give everybody the idea to make sure we understand that, that that building is for sale.
Marine.
Is the, um, the owner currently, uh. Happy to wait until we hear about the grant?
Yes, that we have.
Yeah.
Six months, right Pete? We had six months?
Yes, I just had to unmute, I'm sorry. We've got till July first.
Okay.
Of, of twenty one to perform on, uh, the building.
Okay.
Jane, do you want to assign this to some committee then to discuss what ifs? Or do you think we just take it up like in the June meetings?
Well, yeah, I think I just want.
I think you're gonna wanna get ahead of it before then, and I'm totally aligned with Jane. I think if this is gonna be tricky to get that total amount for sure. I think there's a possibility to get some, but for how many counties that is, I'm totally aligned with what Jane's saying. I think we should start on it sooner than later.
Yeah, I, I agree with that Bailey as well.
So maybe it's health and safety, I don't know.
I was thinking if we're gonna, we're gonna own the building, it'd be parks and properties.
That's true too.
Could be public works, could be one for me, one of those.
Bailey, she doesn't have enough on her.
Yeah, right.
Add it on.
That's why I was trying to go on health and safety.
Might as well tack her on, Jane.
Either that or we could do one, one from health and safety, one from public works, one from parks and just have them kind of get together.
I'm on health and safety too, so.
We'll talk about it and I'll let you kind of know.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Alright, thank you. I think that was it for all of our resolutions, so we're done with Patrick and Seth, right?
Mayor, just two quick things if I may.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
I know, I warned him about you. So, I mean, what Jane was saying is important because. We are trying to keep the costs minimal, but still gets us the grant. So I'm putting this out because, for example. At such time in the future that this building becomes a senior center and there's a gathering of seniors within it. This is room besides the kitchen for gathering, you can't do that now. It will probably trigger more health and safety things like a sprinkler system or something like that. We're not putting that in today because. We can't for one, because we're not supposed to be gathering people in a building, but there's gonna be needs for potential other. Future type things with this building depending on where it eventually goes, so I just wanna point that out as well. We're, we're trying to get this in. And being cost effective so that we can be competitive with a certain amount of money. If that makes sense. So I do, do apply to wanting to get together sooner and have, starting to have some of those conversations.
Agreed. Is the building currently, uh, accessible, handicapped accessible?
There, there's a ramp, yeah, and then part of our cost estimates will be to get two stalls, men and women's to be accessible.
Okay.
Yeah, but not two or three stalls, right? Just one each. So, and as you bring more people in, you might have to put more stalls in, but that should be the next phase down the road.
Okay.
As this warps and becomes more. And then the other quick thing, Mayor, since you walked in and I don't know if anybody noticed, I wanted to introduce Lynn. Who came in a little late, she was in another community meeting way back here. Lynn, Lynn is the new Wendy, if you will, she runs the planning group. With Wendy's Retirement, but she also leads the grant group. So she's just here in case there was any questions that, uh, Patrick could answer.
Okay.
Hello Lynn.
Hi.
Alright, thank you, I'm done there.
Alright, thank you. Pretty short, to heck. Alright, the next item on the agenda, I have to look here. Is the council, oh, the Dillinkle Utilities rolled to the taxes.
Yeah, so, you know, there's always a question as to how much money do we. Roll to the real estate taxes, which we give you each year, and Beth just wanted to let you know that. Through the tax collections, we went from a hundred and thirty two thousand nine fourteen or nine twelve that we rolled, we're down to ninety six hundred. So that, that gets pretty collected. State taxes, so just kind of keep you up to date.
Sounds good, thank you. That's our coffers. Next item on the agenda now is, uh, be a planning commission, concept plan for storage units on Dexter Street. Planning Commission reviewed this plan. Down there by Mary T's or across from Johnson Construction down by the city shop, if everybody knows where that is, kind of the access to. Um, the D Park. Planning Commission accepted the concept. Uh, I know we did throw out there that. You know, that would be a good place, someone, some people think for a gas station or something on that order too. But the concept, they, they said they'd accept. Um, the only thing is there was a turn lane that needed to be put in back when the. Iron Ridge Terrace Development went in, that's something that we're gonna make them have to deal with probably before they get too far along in this development, if I'm correct. Jane, and that's what I said, correct?
Yep, yep.
And we tried to encourage them to maybe only do two or three of the buildings and leave room for a gas station, maybe on, on that intersection somewhere, but. They, of course, again, it's finding someone that wants to put it there. So just give you a heads up, if you have any thoughts or ideas. You can let Jane know, Jane could let the developer know, because again, it's just the concept, that's all it is. They, they have no official blessing. Um, it's still part of ongoing, making sure we have turn lanes too for that subdivision, so.
Yep, and they've been provided with the documents from the DOT. All of that, so they have that all in hand. Marine's got a question.
Green.
Unmute yourself.
Are they one story? You know. Tavern, kind of?
They could eventually have like a mezzanine or a second level tool, but they're really designed to be personal use.
Okay.
Some people call man caves or she sheds or whatever you wanna call them, or you can go and have your hobby. You do it, it would have a bathroom in there and then you leave. It's not, Tom decides to set up and start selling widgets and he has customers come to his widget shop. It's not designed for that, it's personal use only. Doesn't mean a contractor couldn't say, hey, I, I, uh, I just put my truck in there at the end of the night. Little supplies and they go out during the day, that would probably be fine, but it's not for customers and people to show up.
Right.
Was there a. I was gonna ask what the timeline of the product curiosity.
Uh, hmm, not sure, I think they'd like to start them this spring or summer.
Yeah, they're putting up a sign already. They were gonna do some soil borings.
There is, uh, there is a, a business in Cottage Grove that is essentially the same thing. And, uh, they, it's, you buy your individual unit.
Yep.
And they have room for a lot of high-end RV storage. So these people are buying the condo, parking their high-end RV in there. And then, uh, maintaining it and so on and so forth.
Yeah.
That's one of the uses in Cottage Grove. If one, anyone wants to look at something like that, you can drive through that, uh, place. It's on the west side of Highway sixty one.
Would, would they look similar to the other storage units that are up near, um, one of our TIF areas? What is that one up there? Uh, where?
My sundial storage or whatever, those?
Yeah.
No, I think these would be more like what's on Highway twenty nine, just, uh, going out towards River Falls. You see all that pole type buildings out there?
Yeah.
Would be similar, similar to those buildings out there, a little bit taller, a little bit bigger.
So no planned landscaping, so they're gonna look?
No, we can, that's part of what we can require. This is just a concept plan. I know one of our planning commission members brought up that. We don't want just a bunch of tin facing thirty five, it's the entrance to the city, and they did say, no, they probably put brick or something three feet up and give it a little bit of. Style, it wouldn't just be a pole building standing there.
And so, I'd like to see some landscaping as a part of that too, you know, trees or, I don't know, something. It look nice as an entry point into the city. And for also the people that live at Mary T's, you know, so that they're not looking across at a gravel.
Well, they would be paid, but yes, you're right. So when, when they get to the next planning commission level, or Jane could even let them know. You know, some landscaping to kind of break up the look of it. They go with four buildings, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Absolutely no residential out there.
Yeah.
Can't put a bedroom in or anything like that, so.
But you're still, they're directly across the street from housing.
No, what Jane is saying is that the units couldn't become a place where they live.
I know, yeah, I got that, yeah.
And there's no outside storage either. It all has to be inside.
That would be correct, I think. Yep, I think that's what we would state.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yep.
So that's just an FYI. Nothing else on that? I would say parks and public properties, do we have anything, any meetings or anything you wanna get together on, or?
I don't think right now we do.
Alright, and public works, you just had a meeting tonight, correct?
Yeah, yep.
Personnel, is there anything there we need for personnel?
Um, no, we, we've put the ad out now for the wastewater. We've got it out for a good month. We wanna see, get, see what we can get for applications, so.
Alright.
Yep.
Alright, next item on the agenda would be ordinance committee, uh, first one is the first reading possible, second, uh, and third, or waving of the second, third reading. For the ordinance on accessory use or structures, and I think this is Dars baby, right? You're the chairman.
I'll let Jane take this one though, she was, she was the one that brought this back to council, uh, because there were some issues.
Right, so if you recall, probably about eighteen months ago, we changed the height for a accessory structure to twenty five feet. Since that time, we have had two detached accessory structures go up in the middle of town. And the issue that we have is they definitely do not fit in with the rest of the houses that are in that area. They kind of tower over everything else. And I've had a few calls on it, complaints or whatever, calls on it at least. To ask us why we allow something that large. So, um, the recommendation that we had was. was to come back to the fifteen feet. Then we had a little bit of a discussion at planning commission about it. And, um, so then the, the request or the thought was, let's just say somebody is out in St. Croix Bluffs or out in Grave Rivers where they've got a larger lot and they could have a, you know, a taller height building. So we thought that a request could be made to the zoning board of appeals for conditional use for a detached structure greater than fifteen feet in height.
Hmm.
So that would allow somebody with a larger lot to be able to put in something that's a little bit taller.
To request, to be able to put it in.
Correct. Yes. Now, there, there are a few additional steps. Um, it, a conditional use now has to go before zoning board of appeals because it is something that can be appealed through the circuit court.
Hmm.
So, and then there is an additional fee of five hundred dollars to do a, a, a conditional use. So they'd have to pay the five hundred dollars. It would be published in the paper twice and all of the adjoining property owners would be notified of the request for the conditional use. We'd have to have a public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. So there are a few more steps. But maybe that's the right thing to do when we're doing something that's greater than, uh, the fifteen feet, so, um.
Gives them options besides just the fifteen.
Right, yep.
Anybody have any questions, thoughts?
Yeah, that, uh, that's not in the ordinance though. That last excerpt that changes put out.
Yeah, they did put in about the conditional use or the special use request. That's in the ordinance.
On the second, it's on the second page. Go from the bottom of that first page. And then a request can be made to the zoning board of appeals for conditional use permit for a detached accessory structure greater than fifteen feet. It's not saying they're going to get it, but they can make the request.
The right to request, yeah.
Yep. And once you make that request and if it's turned down, you don't get back your five hundred dollars because that went and paid for the two times in the newspaper and then all of the mailings to the neighbors.
Okay.
And then the thing is that we would have to keep really good notes and we'd have to tape everything because it can be appealed to the circuit court is what, um, can happen now with the conditional use.
Okay.
You have to really lay out your reasons why you would not issue that conditional use. Josh, your thoughts? Cause I know you were in that other, that other twenty-five foot section of it, but I don't know if you've seen those in the middle of town. Kind of how they've stood out. And it was two of them at the exact same time that kind of went up.
Did those go through before our, when the ordinance read twenty-five feet?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And one went the total of the twenty-five feet and the other one would have, but she's in the power lines right now is what it appears. Or she's right by the power line, so she couldn't go the full twenty-five feet, but she's probably at twenty-two feet.
Hmm.
Okay. So, uh, you know, maybe just take our time. We can just approve the first reading tonight of resolution zero one twenty-one. I'd entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve ordinance zero one dash twenty-one to repeal the city ordinance section six, three, five hyphen eight, four. Uh, accessory uses or structures as reads in our to fifteen feet or less with a re, that a request can be made to the zoning board of appeals for a confident for a conditional use permit for a detached accessory building greater than fifteen feet.
That's first reading, Marine?
Yeah.
Correct. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second approved resolution zero one twenty-one. Uh, having to do with accessory use and structures. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the, uh, resolution zero two twenty-one, section three oh three eight, open burning. Um.
Okay, so I'll continue with this. Um, it was brought to the committee in regards to um, adding some things onto our open burning, um, ordinances.
Hmm.
Um, and it was the following items to be added to the ordinances. Uh, number seven to be added would be fires shall be permitted, permitted for three hours maximum to eleven PM and shall be completely extinguished at the completion of the activity or eleven PM, whichever comes first. Uh, number eight was to add only clean dry wood to be burned. Number nine to be added as a request, fires must be supervised at all times by competent person sixteen years or older until extinguished. Number ten, only commercial charcoal lighter fluid can be used for starting fires. Eleven means to extinguish fire must be readily available such as a garden hose or water filled containers. And number twelve, no fire in the winds. Uh, no fire in winds over fifteen miles per hour.
I have a question. Where did we come up with the three hour maximum?
That came from the Mendota Heights ordinance.
What's that?
Say again, Tom.
We borrowed that from the Mendota Heights ordinance. Which we used somewhat as a model for the seven, for the seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve additions to the ordinance.
So in hours of limited daylight, let's say they wanted to have a fire at five o'clock, so then they can only have it till eight.
Correct.
And how are we going to monitor that? Could that, oh, by, uh, neighborhood complaint? Or is the police, or is the police department going to drive around and try and force backyard fires?
It would be complaint based.
Okay. Anybody else got thoughts? I have some, I have something. I'm going to wait. Yes, Marine.
Yeah, does, does this apply to smokers as well? Because smokers often are much longer. That.
Right. And I, no, an open fire is an open fire. Be like.
Okay, alright, yeah.
How I would see it. And you have other thoughts? Cause, cause mine, I, I'm one of those. I'll have a fire in the backyard in three hours and very long, you better get the fire going. You're putting it out. Um, I'm also a building inspector code enforcement guy for another city, as most all of you know. And, uh, more regulation isn't always better.
Right.
Um, I, I never appreciate it when council wants to change an ordinance because, and again, I'm going to probably pick on Dave here. Uh, one person has a complaint in how many years I've been on the council? And we're going to change an ordinance? You know, is it just two people aren't getting along or is just, you have to train a neighbor? And are there other ordinances? So I would say we probably have a public nuisance ordinance that if someone is burning crap wood or smoke, call the police up, public nuisance issue. Doesn't have to be an open fire. Well, it's a public nuisance. It's neighbors getting smoke blown in their back window and it's, well, there's ten miles an hour or five miles an hour or fifty miles an hour. Public nuisance. But do we use the existing ordinances instead of adding another layer to another ordinance? Another thing for the police to have to think of all. Which is my, this, this is my opinion. But again, three hours? I like the idea of shutting down eleven. That would be me shutting down early some nights, but one o'clock should be great planning for someone to sit by a fire. Um, clean dry wood. I did talk to the chief saying, he's saying, well, how do we invoice it? Well, you're common sense. You know, they're not ripping the siding off the house and burning it or a piece of furniture in the fire pit. You know, those are, that's common sense. If it isn't dry wood, guess what? It's usually smoking. Well, then again, we can use a public nuisance. Uh, sixteen years and older, that sounds reasonable to me. Lighter fluid, that'd be a tough one because they could throw gas on it. It's burnt before the police get there, but we could have it in there. And then means of extinguishing it. I, I don't see a problem there. But again, it's how many layers do you put on? Or is it more of, there's a complaint, call the police. The police have to make a call. Yes, it's smoking. It's, it's a nuisance, whatever it is, and enforce it that way instead of putting more layers. I do like some of these though, the eleven o'clock and maybe a sixteen year old, maybe that's a wise idea. That's just my two cents. I don't know if anybody else wants to respond to that. Permission to speak? Uh, not yet. Patrick, Marine?
I, I do think that these, um, have some relevancy because if you read some of the materials that, um, David submitted. There is a question of, of, um, of particles. And we know that smoke does have particles. It's almost impossible to, um, to take them out unless you have a, I don't know, special filter. But I, I do think we could say the fire has to be out by eleven without saying that it can only be for three hours. I would agree with that. I don't see any problem with the other, um, the other, uh, limits that are in here now.
I think that, I think where some things are going to get a little difficult is so if we're treating this as an ordinance and we're expecting to do fines on it, a lot of this in a court of law is going to be hard to prove. Kind of to Dave's point, just a little bit, you know, was the wood dry? Well, they could say that they burned all the wood that was dry and all that was left was wet. Um, same thing with the accelerant that they choose to use. And so I think just from that standpoint, like what purpose wise, I know kind of what we're going at, but if, if it's from a finding position and an ordinance piece from a court of law standpoint, it's going to be hard to prove some of these things.
Yes, Josh?
Yeah, I just, this, the dry wood, I mean, what percentage? Sixteen percent, fourteen percent, twelve percent? I support leaving the ordinance as it is. And that's all I have. I'm going to mute myself.
Okay, thank you, Josh. That's why we're having first and second readings. Um, anybody else have thoughts on it? I know Rob had a few concerns. Josh has Marine. Again, you had your concerns too.
You know, if it's, if, if the fire is smoking, they're probably burning yard waste. And if you look at, uh, number five, it's always and everywhere been in there. It says no rubbish or yard waste. That's most likely why your fire is smoking, not because it's burning that wood or whoa, whoa, whoa. But you know, if it's smoking, then you know, like Dave said, it's a police matter and you should call them up and or do an Averly thing and walk over and say, hey, did you guys know that you're not supposed to be doing that?
No.
You know, I mean, I agree with Josh. Leave the ordinance be. That's like having too many layers.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Well, a little, a little bit of the history on why the, the time limit and eleven, eleven PM came up.
Yep.
Was last summer and spring at the beginning of COVID. As you recall, the bars were shut down. So we had a lot of folks in town that were basically going out lighting fires early in the evening or in the afternoon even. And, uh, replacing the bar with the, the fire pit. And the time limit was the thinking is, is, uh, we're either looking at an outright ban of open burning or policing it down to the point that people can have a weenie roast or a smores cookout with their family. Uh, that, that is what that's all about.
Hmm.
Uh, it, I live in the center of town. And it's, it's a nuisance when there are eight, ten, twelve fires going throughout the, uh, the, the local blocks. And it's, it's, uh, you know, you finally get to the point where you can open your windows and no, you got to shut them again. Because the entire neighborhood is filled with smoke. So that's kind of what the thought process is, is kind of governing this activity, but not wanting to outright ban it.
I think you, I think you hit a definition in your statement of what you just said, that it was a nuisance.
Well, and I think that that's why in what we discussed at the meeting itself is that I think what I had brought up was that some, I think we have to take this and, and maybe split it up and part of this to me is, um, worthy of adding to this ordinance from a safety standpoint. Somebody over sixteen years and older. I don't want ten-year-old kids out there trying fires really in town or, or anywhere. But, um, being able to just define that, define a time limit of eleven PM and that somebody's there in the presence of that fire while it's burning and that they have something readily available to put it out. I mean, those are things that I think should be included in this ordinance from.
I would agree with the safety stuff, Dar. I would agree with the safety stuff, absolutely. Uh, but the, um, and separating it might be a good idea. Where I'm wondering is like, we're starting with the eleven o'clock burn ban. We're saying, okay, past eleven, you can't do this. And then do we have anything in our ordinances now where it's like you can't be outside or conversating? So even if the bonfire goes out and people are outside socializing, I mean, how far are we willing to go with this?
Well, this is open fire.
I get it, but then it's going to turn into noise.
Well, if somebody wants, if somebody wants to get a, a, one of these propane uh, artificial fire pits and go around and sit on their patio till dawn, that's not a problem as long as they don't, uh, become a nuisance with noise. But.
I mean, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm not going to go buy a propane one.
Well, I think too, also looking at what defines a nuisance in regards to some of this as far as, um, outdoor burning. And I don't think there is really a definition that in our ordinances in regards to nuisance. Um, and then you look at, you know, discussing that as a nuisance and then we then have to talk about, then do, do we have to enforce that part of it? Because you know, a public nuisance has to be enforced um, by the PD or by, you know, if we have a road enforcement officer at some point, whatever. But, um, so I think we're, we'll take this back to the ordinance committee and we'll have some more discussions.
I do agree with the safety stuff though, Dar, like the ages and all that jazz. I think that, that's.
Right. I do too. I'm un, I'm unclear whether I agree with seven yet. Or even, but eight seems to be reasonable.
Yeah. Clean dry wood is just a, basically it's a guideline. It's hard to say what's considered dry.
Why? Right.
But it still tells them, don't be burning the yard waste or the leaves that just came off the trees, that type.
Already mentioned up above. So maybe it should be included up above. You know?
Yeah. So.
True.
That's everyone's opinion. Again, if you go back to the committee, hate to throw it back at you, but I think you got a little bit more of the council who's going to vote on it.
Well, I, I felt like it, yeah, it's going to do something though.
You've got to start somewhere. Yep. And, and as far as David, I know you're on there and you want to speak, but it's at the committee level normally where you want to do all the talking and then the council level, yeah, we may, we may let you speak, but, uh, we're not there yet. So we'll keep it at the committee level and let them do most of the discussion. So, just so you know, not that we don't want to listen to you, but you can, the only time now you can speak or you want to is at the end of this meeting, there's another, uh, public comment. You can speak up then again at the end of the meeting. At this point, we're still in council. Anybody else have any thoughts on that one? We're not, don't even want to do a first reading with some modifications. You want to just send it back?
Send it back.
Proposed to send it back.
Okay. So it looks like three out of the four of these would say that. So Dar, we're going to send it back to your committee and massage a little bit more and bring it back again. That'd be wonderful. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, I think was the swimming pool one, right? Resolution zero three twenty-one, swimming pools where we're going to, uh, see exhibit A, which I had it. Now that I got the new one here. Yeah. So what are the big things that are changing here? If you want to present that, Dar or Jane, I don't know which one of you want to do it.
Um, I will begin and then Jane, you can intercept because sometimes this gets a little confusing, but we're, we're basically going back defining, um, that a fence has to be around any pool that isn't exempt and exempt pools are storable children's swimming or waiting pools with a maximum dimension of fifteen feet and a maximum wall height of fifteen inches and which are so constructed that they may be readily disassembled for storage and reassembled to its original integrity. They are exempt from the provisions from the sect, the section, which means all un, below ground swimming pools, of course, as of now, need to have fences, but now we have our above ground pools that are, um, over fifteen inches. They have to have a pool, they have to have a fence. They have to have a pool, they have to have a fence around it with a gate. Also, a fence that's around the property would be included in this. Um, all pool owners, except for those that are exempt, must complete an annual pool permit. And that pool permit must be issued prior to filling the pool. Uh, let's, anything else, Jane, you wanna add to that?
So anybody that has a swimming pool now is not exempt. They have to have a fence before they fill it and get a permit. So nobody is exempt from this. Nobody's grandfathered in.
I've forgotten whether this is an annual permit that you.
As an annual permit and I just, I put together. I put together. It depends on the type.
Pardon?
Why do you need a gate?
You don't need a gate. If you wanna fence your whole backyard and without a gate, you have the right to do that.
She said you need a gate.
Yeah, no, I understand that, Josh.
If, if it's a fence just around the pool. If it's a fence just around the pool itself, it has to have a latchable gate to get in and out of it, of course.
All right, well, that's not what you said.
That it can be closed.
Yep.
I'm just saying.
Yep, yep. And I think, I know what her, so, all right, uh, any else?
Why would you have to fence your entire yard along with the fence?
No, you don't have to.
One or the other.
One or the other.
One or the other.
Okay. Need to make sure you have that clarified.
Yeah, so it says a fence surrounding a yard may also be used to meet this requirement, which is that all pools except for the exempt pools require a fence.
Okay, then we'll then not have to have a gate.
If they, if they go around the pool, they have to have a gate. If it's their yard, they don't need a gate.
Okay. Just being, you know, you're gonna get these questions.
You got, yep, you're right.
And they're, they're, it, they're written right there in the updated ordinance. Um, yeah.
So my question.
Tried to make it.
It also says in our ordinance that we're not supposed to shoot off fireworks, but we do. So I'm just making sure that you're clear, everything's being clarified where people can understand what they are and what they don't have to do. And that's all in a devil's advocate.
And I think that's why we went back and forth so many times so that it was, it wasn't complicated. So it was legible, so it wasn't going to be confusing. And I, I feel comfortable with this verbiage personally.
Well, and, and I believe we have someone on that's concerned about this, but my one question is, and I didn't see it in the ordinance, but I glanced through it quick. What's the height of the fence? What's the minimum height the fence has to be in?
Four feet.
Four feet?
Yep.
So if a pool with hard sides has four foot height sidewalls, why would you need a fence around that? Can I ask? Cause the intent of the four foot fence is so that a child shouldn't be able to climb over that fence to get to the pool. So if you have an above ground pool that has a four foot high fence or four foot high sides, why would we need a fence?
The ladder.
Cause you, you, you can remove the ladder, but, but I would try to, you know, someone say, well, they won't remove the ladder. Well, we can put gates on fences, but there's no guarantee that gate will always be shut. It's the same, same concern. It's, you know, you, as, as someone said earlier, and if it's got a neighbor that forgot to take their fence out, you know, give them a call, hey, would you take your fence or take your ladder off or you make sure your gate shut? I mean, that's kind of that part. If they can habitually violate it, then I suppose at some point you could say, hey, you know, four foot high fence or four foot high sidewalls on a pool with the ladder removed and you know, you know, repeated violations can, can result in citation that way without having to have a fence around the pool that's four, four foot tight. My thought. Anybody else?
I can, I can see that rationale there, but um, I do think that it provides a disincentive for people to go to just wander in to the back, to wherever the pool is.
And, and I understand that the, the person that brought this, you know, a little two year old, three year old, four year old, but you know, part of it is, you know, you should watch your children, which it's easy to say, I've had a few times where I've ordered my child's goal. But in reality, you know, you're tired, you don't go in anybody's yard that you should be. And you know, so there's that. How much do you regulate again? And how much is it?
Well.
People gotta protect themselves or watch out for themselves.
I know, but I also think, Dave, when we've got, you know, two, three different communities coming in that you've got these residential properties that are very close together. And my concern is that we're going to be dealing with this on a much larger level a year from now, two years from now, when these homes are in and, and you've got um, properties that don't have fences around them and they, and they put, put above ground pools in that are accessible to any children within neighborhoods.
And, and, and you're talking ones that have four foot sides, correct?
Correct, correct. That aren't the exempt pools, correct?
Right. And, and again, I'm one of those, well, you can't read the ordinance to people, they should ask. You can't do twenty-five through town and I guarantee you people do that. So I'm one of those, and I'm a code enforcement person, so I know that, but I, the more layers you put on, you know, it's just more to try to enforce and forget to enforce. You don't have enough time to enforce and part of it is people have to take responsibility for themselves somewhat. Not what I want my child or anybody's child to drown, no. But four foot fence, four foot sidewall, both four foot before you get into that pool. So that's just my thought, cause a kid could climb a four foot fence and get, still get.
But there's also limiting the accessibility with a, with at least a gate that, that latches and closes to that pool.
Well, you're hoping it latches and closes. The latch breaks and it hangs open all the time. You know, I'm throwing that out there. And we have a river that everybody would love to have a fence across there too sometimes, or the holding pond up by Costco. But there again, we don't do that, cause at what point, you know, do you, do you try to save the world and it's, it's, it's a tough call. I understand where you're coming from. It'd be a tragedy if I did, you know, I said, let's not do it. Someone drowns, darn right, it'd be a tragedy. Happens, it's cold life and it's not fair, but again, how much, how many layers do we put on? That we, you know, we got layers now probably that we don't enforce out there that'd be, you know, maybe we should be enforceable. Yeah. But this is my thought. I'm not saying I'm right. I'm just, I'm always a devil advocate, cause I do both sides of a code enforcement. There's days I think we should have it. There's days I think, how much do you need?
I have a question. Uh, Dar said, you know, a lot of these people have small yards. What about people with big yards? Should the rules be different for them?
Devil's advocate.
Just a question.
No, no, it shouldn't be, but then they put that small fence around the pool itself, you know, just around the pool. That's why we were giving them that, that option. That they wouldn't have to fence in their entire large yard.
Well, no, your, your article was that these people have small yards and kids are gonna come into their yards. What if you have a big yard? I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, there'll be smaller areas with more children that would have more access to other people's yards in a condensed area. I'm just saying it's a probability. It, it could happen. It will happen. There'll be more children in a smaller area with more yards that will be with pools that will be accessible to them. Doesn't matter how big or how small, it's just more people.
Yeah, pools are gonna attract no matter what size you are. When they say a pool, they're gonna wanna do it, so.
Okay.
So, let's, let's move on, I'll let, not move on, but now everyone can think about that. We can still do the first reading and if you get a lot of feedback from people.
I, I, I have a couple of questions. So if, this is gonna get, anybody who gets a permit then, there'll be additional fees, just so everybody's aware of it. Because we charge thirty dollars per fifty feet, maybe the other way around, for a, a fence. So, so there will be additional fees for people to um, to do this, you know, and what's gonna happen? Are they gonna leave it up in the winter in the middle of their yard? Are they gonna take it down? I mean, there's gonna be, I think, a lot of questions there with that. And then I do want you to review, cause I just kind of put together that um, permit. So take a close look at that. Um, you know, above ground, below ground, depth of the pool. Do you have?
I'm, I'm wondering why we're requiring a permit every year. I mean, you get a permit once, you get your fence up, you got a pool. I don't see the every year issue of a permit.
I just think people aren't gonna leave that fence up once they take that pool down.
Okay, hold it. So here's what it'd be. If, if you put up a permanent fence, I don't think you need a permit every year. If they're gonna put up a temporary fence, then I would agree. And at that point, maybe every, every year you come and get a permit.
Yeah.
We wanna verify that the fence got put back up beforehand, but I don't think you, if you got permanent fencing, I don't see the purpose in that.
Yeah.
Require a permit every year.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't think the ordinance quite reads that, but maybe if it's a temporary fence and it gets taken down every year, every year, you have to get a permit to verify your fence went back up before you can put water in your pool. That I, that makes sense to me. Anybody else's thoughts? But yeah, and if we do require a permit, I'm one of those, takes staff time. There should be some fee, if it's twenty-five dollars like a golf cart or whatever it is, uh, we should think maybe a charge and a little something would deter them from wanting to put up a temporary fence with.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, Josh.
So if I finish my basement, I have to get a permit, right?
Correct.
Correct.
So you, you, you don't inspect Prescott, but let's say Mr. Nolan comes and inspects my basement, correct?
Yeah.
He passes it?
Yep.
Does he have to come back next year? And the year after, and the year after?
And that's, that's permanent, you did a permanent thing, so it should be one time. But if, if you, you know, if you'd say, I wanna do this and then tear it down every year, I could see, I could see requiring a permit for that. But even then, I, I, I'm half your way, Josh. I thought, why do we do it every year? But if, if you think it's a temporary fence, I could keep doing it. Not a permanent one.
What if it's permanent?
Huh? What if it's permanent? I don't, I don't think we require a permit every year. I wouldn't. That's just my thought. Who would? Who said they would?
I wouldn't.
Yeah, okay, all right, so.
I agree with you.
Speak?
Um, technically you have to wait till a public comment. All right. And I know you're the one, one that was on, sorry. But we'll, we'll list it up. Comment, cause nothing's gonna get decided tonight, other than we probably will do the first reading with some modifications to follow. Just if you wanna hold on a second. Um, any other, or any other comments from the council? If not, go ahead, Jane.
So what do you want to mean in this first, after this first reading?
Uh, we'll let the first reading happen or see what, what motions made. And then it doesn't mean you, we can't get more feedback to from there. So anybody, anybody wanna do a, a motion with, you can do amendments, you can leave it as is and we can still talk and change it. Um, I'm okay with whatever we make a motion on.
Motion to allow the first reading to go forward to public, for public comment.
Well, just approve the first reading of the resolution, right?
Okay, yes.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it. I'm on the committee. I, I.
I was waiting for you to speak up there.
Let's second that back. I like to see where everyone is and then, then I know when I have a battle, the next battle. So I will second that motion.
Not bad. We're just working together as a team, remember that. Um, so motion made and seconded to approve ordinance zero three twenty-one, the first reading, right now with no modifications. Right? And we've heard some, second reading, if you don't agree with this, I think we can change our mind or not approve the second reading, build changes are made, or if you have strong feelings, I'd say send them to Jane or Dar. Dar's in charge of that. So much made and seconded, any other discussion on the motion as is right now? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
I got four ayes and two nays, so at this point, the first reading did pass. All right. Thank you, everyone, for that participation. Next item on the agenda is licensing. Is there anything we need to do for licensing?
Not right now.
Health and safety, you guys might be in charge of sitting in on the that food shelf, uh, the committee. I was thinking Tom and Ray, I was gonna send them on there anyway, talking with Pete, so they can kind of know what's going on, but we'll talk later. Um, communications is a new business, public comment. Now would be the time is Knox, I'm thinking.
Is that you talking to me now? Can I speak now?
Dave, I, I was gonna go with Ms. Knox first. I think your last name is Knox, correct?
Sure. Um, my comment would be that the.
I get your name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Jamie Knox and eight oh seven Riverwood Street, Prescott, Wisconsin, five four zero two one.
Thank you.
So my comment would be to the um, the question about why an annual permit would be to inspect the fencing and the gate and make sure that they're still in good working order, make sure that the gates are still self latching, self locking, making sure that, that those aren't being left to disrepair. That would be the purpose of an annual permit.
All right, thank you.
That's a good rationale.
Yep. All right, um, any other public comments? Stick your name and your address.
Does that mean I can speak now?
Yes, David.
Well, my name is, I date home, I live at six five three Pine Ridge in Prescott, of course. Um, my, the thing is, is with the, what I was trying to get at with the, looking at a recreational ordinance is that the existing ordinance doesn't really address why, I know, Mayor, you're concerned about layers and top of layers, but I enclose images of what a model recreational fire looks like. And I think if you take the time, look at those pictures, and I also enclose a bunch of pictures of what not a model fire is more smoldering. Um, this isn't about taking people rights and not to have regular fire. This isn't about having clean wood. Usually somebody said, well, how do you determine clean wood? Well, there's moisture meters. I think EPA even talks about it. Something twenty percent or less is ideally considered dry wood. Um, fires smother for several different reasons. One is because you got wet wood. Sometimes the way you lay the wood in there and obviously with the burning. Um, if it doesn't have the proper means of action to get to the fire, it'll create more smoke. Um, but my biggest problem is, is, is that if you look at my image number four, there you have a recreational fire that's taking place while it's snowing and raining. And that's, happens quite often. And, and that's, to me, it's not a recreational fire. It's, 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 it's it's just, you were speaking earlier, Mayor, about having some common sense. Well, there's an example. That's not common sense. I think most people know what, if you have guidelines, I think most of them respect what a model recreation is. There are those that are gonna burn their leaves and trash, and there are those that are gonna burn wet wood. There are, there's gonna start a fire and then leave it. And, and that's where a lot of the smoke and problems come in. I, I don't think most people should have the right to have to breathe something else's smoke. If people have a, a model recreational to follow, um, at least they have a clearly more of an understanding what, what a fire should look like. Um, a lot of my proposals came from right from the Wisconsin D N R. And they have a, a, they call it a, according to Wisconsin, the model ordinance for open burning, a guide for the Wisconsin's cities, villages, towns and, and counties. And they suggest about a lot of the things, they mention a lot of things that I suggested in our, our proposals. Um, and they start out that a model ordinance is intended to promote public health and safety and welfare in the safeguard in health of common living condition. Well, smoky fire, who's it benefiting? Definitely not the surrounding neighbors, you know, and even the people that are having it. It's not good for them. No smoke is good for you. At least if you're gonna have a fire, at least have limited amount of smoke. And I did enclose about the health effects. If you take the time and look at some information and, and all the toxins and smoke, maybe you have a little bit understanding what I'm coming from. Uh, um, again, the, when it comes to Delta Heights, I, I contacted them to the heights today and asked them why they, they choose a three hour fire. Um, the, the, the person there I spoke to said that it was presented to them from the fire chief and a fire marshal. Uh, they did have a history in the past with people using open burning and meth labs. Um, they don't, I don't know that was the reason, but she said, she didn't know. She asked me to speak to the fire marshal, but he wasn't in. I left a message with him, cause I'm curious to know how he came up with three hours. But Mendon Heights is not the only community that chooses three hours. And, and I, again, it doesn't have to be three hours, but I certainly don't wanna see somebody with a six, seven, eight, nine hours with smoky smoke or cooking carcass under fires when there is you know, what they call an oven in a house and, and a propane grill. More and more people are going to propane fire pits and most of the neighbors, even my neighbors, have small fire pits. Uh, uh, um, you know, most. um, you know, most of are decent, but there are some that leave the smoke, not even, not next door, but they're throughout the whole community. You drive around Halloween, you see tons of fires, like the other, I think Thomas was mentioning, there's lots of smoky fires going on. And that to me is not a regular fire, just two weeks ago down the street, somebody had a big fire going out in the smoking and nobody's around, nobody's attending. When you're done with a recreational fire, the least of the decency to put it out and make it, you know, it tells, gone. I mean, that's, I'm just asking for common sense.
Appreciate your input, um, what it is, too, is I, I got your, and I haven't had a chance to look at that, I think I got it, was it today? Um, yeah. It is, it is gonna go back with the committee, and so, again, what you submitted, council, if you'd like, please look through that and give your two cents to Dar on the committee level, at, or Dave, I see Patrick, sorry. Dave, you have the right to come back to the committee again and, you know, after everyone gets to hash through it, you give your two cents again, we understand where you're coming from, you can give me a million examples. Um, you know, and I'm on the other side, sometimes I'm always the devil's advocate, you can write a million ordinances, but people aren't gonna read them, you're still gonna get people that smoke their fires until you tell them they can. Um, it's not gonna stop everyone from doing it, doesn't mean you don't do it neither, so. Um, I appreciate your input, you got, uh, one last comment?
Um, no, just, yeah, just take the time to look at it, oh, yeah, I would appreciate it, I mean, really, then there's a lot of information out there, it didn't close other communities and what they do, uh, um, and.
Okay.
You know?
Nope, nope, I appreciate your input and well, you can stay in touch with the committee and or if you come back the next council and come back up if you want and give your public comments again, I don't wanna keep, have you repeat it, but in the same sense, you got some important information, I think it'll help us make a decision, you can bring it up with that public comment at that time, alright?
Okay, great, thanks.
Thanks, David. Dave, I guess you go by, you go by Dave, so, alright.
My real name is like clothing slash W, you can just call me David, sir.
Sounds good. Is there any other pu- public comments out there?
Just a reminder, February sixteenth, we have an election for the state superintendent of school. We'll be here from seven AM till eight PM that night, so come on over and we're voting at city hall this time.
What's, what's the date, date again, Jane?
February sixteenth.
Oh.
So, Dar, did you wanna set a ordinance meeting?
I think we should, um.
Do you wanna do the council meeting, uh, before the council meeting?
Absolutely, if that works.
Your first reading.
Twenty second.
Correct.
Won't get to your first reading, but, uh.
But, but we'll meet.
Uh, can I touch base with you? I wanna first see what Cedar has, in case there's something else, but, tentatively.
I have twenty seconds.
Alright.
I have a comment.
How about Tom, we close?
I can, I can make it.
Okay, I'll double check.
I am available as well.
Okay, I'll double check to make sure Cedar doesn't have anything else that night we need to do before the council meeting, but I will let you know.
Um, I'd like to point out a couple of things that were in the last, um, the municipality, folks, you should read this magazine, it's really interesting.
That isn't the first, the one that just came out a couple of days ago, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to look at mine.
Yeah, good. It, it has, um, some, uh, moving forward during the co- um, COVID crisis, there were some really good suggestions for what cities could do to help out businesses and, um, uh, and so I thought those were good and, um, the other, there was a, um, a new focus for federal funding that we should begin to talk about with, um, our, um, representatives at the federal level. And then that was on page eleven, I think you should really read, it's just one section. But it might be that we should as a council put together a letter and do some advocacy. And then the, a goal aim at boosting economic growth, that article is excellent.
Okay.
So, if you're really interested in what we can do as a community, um, to promote economic growth, it's only four pages, I recommend reading it or three pages.
Do you guys, do you guys get the e- emails from the league?
I, I used to, but I don't.
Okay, if not, you should really sign yourself up for those.
Yeah, it's really good.
Yeah, today, like now, today they came out with, uh, more stuff on shared revenue and of course the the mask mandates, huge down in Madison and all of that, and there were lots of good information in those, um, emails, they come about, well, sometimes they come daily, sometimes they come twice a day. It's a week, depending on what's going on down there, but if you don't get it, you should sign yourself up there, it's really, really good.
Yeah, they have, they do an excellent job, the league of cities.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Any other public comments?
Second.
This is no other business. I got a motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank everyone for your participation today.
Thank you.
Have a great weeks, stay warm.
Bye.
Bye.